Good evening, everybody. We are going to call this council work session together. Madam Clerk, would you be in your role?
Certainly, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor, opposed. We are going to talk about complete streets. Eric, is that you or Felicia or who's picking it up?
Hi, I'm Felicia Cass. I'm here to represent the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. We thank you for your time tonight. We met with you last year, last fall, and asked how you really wanted us to proceed. And what we heard back from you is bring us a budget and a number of projects. So that's what we're here tonight to talk to you about. We just want to remind you of the benefits of the complete street, that it really improves safety for all concerned. So it, by implementing and really thinking through all the users of the streets, bikers, walkers, and traffic traverse the streets more safely. There are also health benefits to having walkable, bikeable streets, and there are economic benefits. Communities that have really focused on creating walkable, bikeable communities have seen their retail environment thrive. The complete streets policy that you passed in 2013 does 10 things. It sets a vision. It says we want to consider all users of the streets. It specifies all users. It's all projects, however, there are exceptions. So obviously, we're not going to have bikers and walkers on Highway 218. It really focuses on creating a network of connectivity. Can we get to school, work, and shopping by biking or walking? It includes all agencies and all roads. So it includes the DOT, the county, the city, all the partners who might be touching a particular road. There are design criteria. It's context sensitive. So we're really coming to you tonight with areas that we think are high usage. We're really focused on creating a network that's connected that will get used. And we're working on developing performance measures so we can talk to you about what the usage is today and what it'll be afterwards. I've been amazed as I've driven up and down Highway 63, the north side where you have pedestrian and bicycle paths that are completed. I never used to see walkers out there. Now, today, it's really getting a lot of use. Obviously, you can implement all the, do all of this, but if you don't do implementation, you haven't really achieved a complete street policy. So it called for implementing. And what we're really trying to do is get from here, I really find that image of the walker on San Marnon, he's sort of stranded in the middle there, pretty compelling. We want to get from here to here. Beautiful streets that we can walk and bike and drive down where there's vital economic activity happening. So what we've accomplished so far, in June of 2013, you passed the complete streets policy and you received an award. You were one of the top 15 policies for 2013 based on that policy. With a complete streets advisory committee has been formed and administrative rules have been adopted. We've had several committee meetings and we've had input and updates on Highway 63, University Avenue, Kimball Avenue, Park Avenue, and we've reviewed the annual street reconstruction program. I want to tell you about a real win, I think, that we've had. As we were reviewing the streets that we wanted to bring to you, this was one of our top priorities. It's West Dale Street on the north side by the remodeled emergency room. And as you can see, this elderly gentleman walking in the street, there's no sidewalk there. So rather than coming to you first and saying, let's put this in the budget, it's a higher priority, we went to Allen Hospital and asked them to take a look at this. And they're in the middle of filling that sidewalk in. So one of the advantages, I think, you've got with the complete streets advisory committee is on our own, we'll take the initiative to search for partners. We're also a place where concerned citizens can come. So we had Harmony House come to our last meeting and present a real concern down on Highway 63. City staffs already started to work with the DOT and we're working on a solution which we'll be bringing to you at a future date. Our focus this year is on reconstruction projects. And I do want to reiterate our support for the Highway 63 overpass pedestrian trail accommodations. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right. The cost is estimated for this overpass with the pedestrian portion at 1.3 million. And we're in full support of this project. We've sent letters to you and to the DOT, but we wanted to take this chance to reiterate our support for that. We're also in the process of writing an MPO, Pedestrian Master Plan. This summer, we did a statistically significant mail and email survey. We've had very good response to the survey and we're at the data analysis portion. We should be looking at that and coming back with the information to share on that later this fall. We're also working with our immigrant and newcomers and homeless population and doing one-on-one interviews with those folks. This will not be statistically significant, but we think it will inform in a very meaningful way where we go forward, thinking about transportation for all users. And I briefly mentioned the trail access on Highway 63 South and the issues that Harmony House is having with people trying to cross Highway 63, use the bike path to get up to Casey's and then crossing back over there. So we're working with them on that. There'll be more to come on that. We're coming to you tonight to recommend five projects we'd like to see funded in the 2016-2017 budget. Those include Esther Street, West Park Lane, Williston Avenue, Johnston Street, Bethel Street, Ridgeway Avenue, for a total of about 222,000. When we came to you last fall, we asked, well, give us a number to start to work with. And you suggested somewhere in the neighborhood of 200,000. So that's what we've brought you. Wayne will tell you how much that West Dale project was. So we've gotten some done without using city funds. And Wayne's going to talk to you about the specifics of these, each of these projects. Do you have any questions before we get into the specifics? Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Wayne Castle, associate engineer. There are several of us engineers and city staff on the Complete Streets Committee kind of add and give technical advice to help with the entire group. Like Felicia said, we have five sites that we looked at, all of whom are, the basis we took was we're looking at schools, government places, commercial areas where we know we would have a lot of pedestrian use. And so those are the first ones. They're all smaller projects, not big, long infill projects, but they do have benefit to those in the surrounding area. So the images you see right now, this one is Esther. It serves George Washington Carver School. The colors on the map, the green are existing sidewalk. The red, that's posed under this particular project. So if you notice in some of the streets, there are gaps with the green, and that's kind of typical with our entire infrastructure. Anyway, the reason why this one was chosen is originally when the school was at its original site, Louise was the main crossing for students coming from West Ford Street all the way over to 63. With the reconstruction and moving of the school, that moved down to Esther Street. So the light at Louise is gone, and now it's down at Esther. So we're looking at, okay, let's get Esther Street, let's put a continuous path along there from West Ford to the school.
East Ford.
East Ford, sorry. I kept having that problem. Been working on those other sidewalk projects. So what this does, we're looking at the north side only. 85,000, that's about 915 lineal feet of sidewalk. We've got a number of driveways and alley approaches to go through. You've got a nice connection out that takes you from East Ford, Gates Park, whatever happens over at the old Chamberlain Site, to the school. And you're also, you know, that's the first street north of the railroad tracks. So that gives you a nice connection once you get past railroad tracks. The second one is West Park Lane. This is in the area of Henry Hoover. We've had, we know what the issues are. There's partial sidewalk, but there really is no connectivity. So if you're a student and you live east of Kimball Avenue and you come up Park Lane, you're on the north side. You get over to, you cross Kimball, and now you have to cross to the south because there's no sidewalk on the north side. And you can walk down Colby or Park Lane almost to Colby, but then you've got 105 feet of no sidewalk. An issue that we didn't have, or that we have too, is there are no ramps that will get you across the street. So at least with this portion, I'm taking care of part of that with the ramps at Brockway. That was the best place. So now we have a crossing at Brockways under the city contract because we're in that area this year to provide some routes. But with this proposal, we're looking at putting in two spots. You've got a continuous path along Colby between Kimball or on Park between Colby and Kimball. And now if you come down from the north, you can hit the sidewalk, go all the way over to Colby. You come from the south, you can hit the sidewalk, and you still go all the way over to Colby. That one is about 470 lineal feet of sidewalk. Williston, this one is just one of those, there was a garage there, and when it's built, it's never required of putting sidewalk. It's really only about 70 feet of sidewalk. It's right across the street from the main entrance to the school. And really, this is the only spot on the entire stretch of Williston and Campbell from Fletcher all the way to 218 that doesn't have a sidewalk, and it's right in front of the school. And so this, why would you want to put a sidewalk there? You can go out there and take a look now, and there is a beaten path in the grass. People are walking through there. We really should have it. We should have a sidewalk there. The cost is a little high for about 70 feet. Each of these costs, based on numbers that we saw from the last Cunningham School sidewalk project we had, and given a little bit more just in case, what year they actually get done, kind of give you a ballpark of what it would cost. Also, as if it was done as a standalone, if it was part of a larger project, the cost would be probably quite a bit less. This one, Johnson Street, it's a really interesting area. It's where you've got different side, or the way the streets lay out, it's where they come together. You've got those that are perpendicular to the river and those that are sectioned line roads, they all merge in this area. We're looking at making a continuation along Johnson Street so you can get from Irving School, Stone Moll Stadium, all the way over to Ninth Street and get over to the Leveford Park. The big thing here is it's right along the parking lot. You would also help improve the access to Grace Lutheran Church, which is on the corner there of Johnson and, I believe that's Allen Street. So 20,000, it's a nice little project. The last one is Bethel Street and the Ridgeway Avenue. This one is on the southeast corner. What it does then is it gives us a connection from Bethel across Ridgeway and then gets us over to Oregon Street, which then connects us to the school. So short-term, we've got access for all these neighborhoods and all those apartments, single-family homes, condominiums that are going in south of Ridgeway, and there's a lot of room for future development. Long-term, if more infill goes in and we do some more infill sidewalk projects, you could have a connection from this neighborhood all the way to Target to the east and Walmart to the southwest. Are there any questions?
Wayne, were any of these part of the Safe House to School grant request?
We did try for the Hoover-Henry. We were denied on that one. We tried for Ethel through the tip, and we were denied on that one. So we have tried to get funds for these beforehand, but were denied. But that was a lot of statewide competition. So we got three projects, we got pretty good with that one, but these smaller ones, it's tough to get funding on.
Okay, thanks.
So the bottom line is we're really requesting that you fund these projects in your 2017 budget. We understand that there will be a changeover in the council before you start to consider the 2017 budget, and we'll be happy to come back and make this presentation again, but we wanted to be here early. We know when it gets to budget time. There's a lot of demands on your time. So any questions or concerns or comments about this?
Anybody? Ms. Cole?
Thank you for coming, and I think these are excellent projects because they benefit, pardon the expression, the greater good. We're taking care of children. We're taking care of people who need to be taken care of. I would contrast this, for example, with the footing drains where we just gave $2,000 to individuals. And this makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. Please convey that to the committee.
I will, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morris.
Yeah, Felicia and the Complete Advisory Committee, I guess, even though I'm on that as well, I still have to commend you and say thank you for partnering up with Allen and working with Harmony House on this too. That's great initiative.
It's really great, and we have great corporate citizens in the city, and we're very appreciative of Allen's support. So we'll continue to look for those kind of opportunities.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Yes, 504.
Sorry.
504. Let's call the Boards and Commissions meeting to order. Madam Secretary, if you'd read the rule, please.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. If one of you gentlemen would like to take that. Mr. Chair, I move that we receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation of the following appointment. Eric Donat to the Boards of Commission for the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on that appointment. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. That appointment is approved. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned.
All the Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the rule?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and also the minutes of September 21st as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, gentlemen. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We can do business.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those first few items.
Thank you.
First, we have Investigator Gergen and Officers Savage and Erie to the TASER Instruction Recertification Meeting in Altoona, Iowa, October 9th, at an amount not to exceed $795. Then we have Officers Erie, Hugher, Kemp, Wertz, and one field training officer for the Ultimate FTO in Raymond, Iowa, October 27th and 28th, at an amount not to exceed $498. Next, we have Scott Strater, Combination Inspector II for the Residential Building Inspector Training in Coralville, Iowa, October 22nd, 2015, with alternate dates of October 27th, 28th, or 30th, amount not to exceed $168. Kent Schankel, Director of Center for the Arts for the Pickup of Artwork Donations in Plainfield, Massachusetts, via Memphis, Tennessee, and Baltimore, Maryland, October 12th through the 17th, at an amount not to exceed $1,295. Battalion Chief Jen, Lieutenant Powers, Weeks, Luck, Paramedic Hess, and possibly Training Officer Charlie for the Tri-State Emergency Responder Conference in Dubuque, Iowa, October 16th, 17th, at an amount not to exceed $921. Lieutenant Ferguson, 2015 Fire Prevention Building Safety Education Conference, Ankeny, Iowa, October 20th through the 23rd, amount not to exceed $660.92.
Second.
Move to approve those items. Okay.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
Dan, item number two. Officers Erie, Hugher, Kemp, Wertz, Field Training Officer, is that certified or ongoing education or?
I don't know if we certify our field training officers or not, so I'm going to just say it is not for any type of certification.
All right.
Dan, while you're up there, a quick question on five. Are the folks going to this conference? Are they on shift at that time, or do we have to pay overtime?
That's me and the chair there.
Pat, Trilo Chief Fire Services, it's all off-shift. So there'll be no overtime costs involved.
How many lieutenants do we have, Pat?
21 plus a training officer. 21 shift lieutenants and one lieutenant's assigned to training.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
I'd vote aye on everything except number two. I'd vote nay on that.
All right, the items pass. We have some pre-authorizations.
Pre-authorizations. We have building maintenance, $5,850 for electrical wiring, CAT 6 cables for the arena. Center for the Arts, $1,670 for advertising with Lamar billboards. Holiday Arts Festival 2015, Central Garage, $6,145.56 plus $200 shipping for turbo and associated parts replacements for fire 301. Central Garage, $10,160 for line, bore, frame pivots for loader A01. Central Garage, $3,800 for front-end parts for backhoe. Number 144G02, Culture and Arts, $1,384 for new flooring and east wing upper-level kitchen. Culture Arts, $9,455 for ceramic tile installation and upper west wing restrooms at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Engineering, $13,625 for the removal and replacement of driveways to United Medical Park on Ridgeway Avenue. Total cost to be shared 50/50 with Unity Point Health. Planning, $3,500 for appraisal of Sunnyside South subdivision. Planning, $1,500 for demolition of Old Wellhouse at 1625 Sycamore. Sewer Department, $1,661.76 plus $30 shipping for replacement mechanical seal for number one, esophalic feed pump. Sewer Department, $5,264.72 plus $150 shipping for two grinder sump pumps for digester complex. Sewer Department, $3,438 plus $16 shipping for replacement of mechanical seals for number three, primary sledge pump. Traffic operations not to exceed $2,500 plus $250 shipping for four packages of eight-foot thermoplastic left arrow and four packages of eight-foot thermoplastic right arrows.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion, gentlemen?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First, engineering, Eric. That item there of splitting the driveway costs with United Medical, is that normal? I don't remember seeing an item like that in the past.
Eric, as an engineer, when we did the overlay on Ridgeway, they have kind of a steep driveway and cars were kind of bottom out. The overlay made it a little worse. So we worked with them on it, and they want to change some things on the driveway, so we decided to split the cost. And so the amount there is our half, but we're expecting that to come down some more because we've decided not to remove and replace curb. We're just going to saw off what's necessary.
I mean, is this anything we've done before?
Well, we've never had a situation like this before, so.
Yeah.
Their driveways were pretty steep to begin with.
Right.
The overlay probably made the bottoming out a little worse.
Are you, I mean, are you concerned at all that we're setting a precedent here, or a possible precedent?
No, I don't think so. I don't think we're going to find these kind of situations very often. This is pretty unique.
Okay. Is it a error in their engineering for the driveway to be that way to begin with? I mean, I'm just wondering, how did we get this?
On Ridgeway, the trail was there first, and when they put in their driveways, they just matched up to the trail. They probably should have lowered the trail some at that time, but for whatever reason didn't do that.
Okay. And then for planning, no, it's not Eric.
Just about here.
Oh, no. Can I ask that appraisal for Sunnyside South, is that another appraisal, or is this, did we not, didn't we just do an appraisal within the last three to six months, or am I getting this mixed up with something else?
Eric Strader, City Planner. We did have an appraisal of the area in the last court. That appraisal provided a retrospective valuation of the property as of the date prior to it being vacated and prior to the legal mess that it is currently in. As part of the last court proceeding, the judge ruled that we cannot do a retrospective appraisal. It must be a current fair market appraisal, so we have to get the appraisal done again.
So this is basically court ordered, kind of?
I mean, the court ruled that the other one wasn't acceptable, so if we want to try and move forward, we have to get a new one.
Got you. And just to add to that, the previous court had told us to do it the other way, so we're going with the latest court decision.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye on all items except the Sunnyside South appraisal, simply for appearance sake. I do not reap any financial benefit from that. Opposed? Same sign? Okay, those items pass. I move that we approve the project budget amendment to make improvements at the Burns Park Horseshoe Pits, which is funded with $2,000 in donations from the Horseshoe League as submitted by Leisure Services.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's wonderful.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That item passes. I also?
I hope you knew some of that was out of the quote of the week here.
Oh, stop. I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are $1,228,468.05, 1,228,468.05.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We're going to pay the bills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Gentlemen, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, September 28th. We have a nice crowd in chambers tonight, so welcome to all of you, and to those that might be watching us on our public access television also. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Certainly, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn. Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good, thank you. If it'll join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Keith Gaspari, our Airport Director. Keith, if you would, please.
Would you follow on to that? Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I can make a motion that we approve the agenda as proposed, and also that we approve the minutes from September 21st regular session. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have several proclamations tonight, so I'm going to start with, the first proclamation is one that is recognizing Mental Illness Awareness Week. Leslie Cohen was supposed to be with us tonight to accept this, and Leslie couldn't make it, but I was asked to read it anyway. So I am going to read the proclamation. Obviously, mental illness is a serious situation, and certainly something that's worth our time. So, this is a Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas mental health is part of overall health, and whereas one in five adults experience mental illness in a given year, and approximately half of chronic mental illness begins by age 14, and three-quarters by age 24, and whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, and whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 4th through the 10th as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Waterloo, Iowa, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote identification and treatment of mental illness, and be it further resolved that people are encouraged to take the stigma-free pledge on the NAMI National Website in observance of Mental Illness Awareness Week. And I will get this proclamation to Leslie. And Mr. Hart, maybe you can help me here with who's next. The next one is, oh, Sherm, come on up. This is our good friend, Sherm. And it says, "And UNI students." Do you have students with you tonight?
They did not make it up here.
Alright. Sherm is... You want to bet on that? Sherm is here. We do this annually, and Sherm is a good friend of all of us at the city and of the earth. So we are here today to recognize Earth Science Week. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas geology and other earth sciences are fundamental to society, and whereas the earth sciences are integral to understanding and managing the resources necessary for society, and whereas the earth sciences provide society with the information necessary to develop the skills to manage our resources, and whereas the earth sciences are crucial to mapping resource locations to determine best management practices and understanding natural hazards, and whereas the earth sciences encourage the application of technology to locate, use, and conserve our resources, and whereas the earth sciences combine the efforts of governments, citizens, and professionals at all levels to best manage our resources. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the second week in October as Earth Science Week. Sherm, that's for you, and I'm sure you want to say something about something.
Something, anyway. Thank you very much.
Your will.
We thank you for issuing the proclamation for Earth Science Week 2015. On behalf of the Earth Science Week Committee and participants, we encourage you, as public officials and the viewing audience, to consider carefully the impact of the earth sciences ranging from all aspects of geology to hydrology, atmospheric studies, agricultural concerns, and beyond. The understanding, information, and application in the earth sciences are key components to solving problems and implementing practical solutions to management issues. As part of this concern, in terms of resource management, we are pursuing the establishment of the Middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority as we speak, which is within this important framework of managing our resources. And we certainly look forward to receiving from the City of Waterloo a resolution indicating your interest in becoming involved in this Middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority. As part of this effort, this long-going effort, we invite you and the public to attend Sunday at the Quarry Program this Sunday, October 4th, at Raymond Quarry, just east of Raymond, Iowa. The Iowa Geological Survey, the United States Geological Survey, the Iowa Flood Center, and the Mineral Club, the Soil and Water District, and the University of Northern Iowa Earth Science Department, along with a very special program from the NRCS and the Iowa Learning Farms entitled "The Conservation Station," will be there with information, with special displays and solutions for water quality initiative for urban and rural residents. So thank you so very much.
Sherm, thank you, sir. Have a good day at the quarry. Thank you, and good luck with that watershed project. I know we have quite some interest in that, so.
Very good. We look forward to receiving your wisdom.
Alrighty. Jake and Hannah Byers, are you here? Come on up.
Jake's here.
Jake's here, okay. I thought you probably weren't Hannah, but I, that was a guess.
Yeah, it was a guess.
Alright. Jake, welcome. Good to see you. You bet. Just come right on up. We are here with Jake to recognize Down Syndrome Awareness Month. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas approximately one in every 691 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 5,000 births per year in the United States, and whereas there are over 400,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States, and whereas while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed into the cause and treatment of Down Syndrome, and whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our community, and whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universally desired goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Jake, and I have those for you, and I have a microphone for you. I'm assuming you're going to want to say something. Hold it right up next to your mouth.
First of all, thank you, Mayor Clark, and to the council, for recognizing the importance of raising awareness of the abilities of people with Down Syndrome. I wish my daughter Hannah could have been here tonight, but speech therapy trumped the city council meeting today. Trust me, she's much cuter than I am, and much more entertaining than I am as well. But as the father of a child with Down Syndrome, I feel incredibly blessed, in more ways than I can possibly explain tonight, but I can speak firsthand from the experience and say that we are blessed to live in the Cedar Valley. Waterloo and the surrounding communities are filled with great people who embrace diversity and understand that being inclusive of all people makes our communities better for everyone. It is also filled with great resources currently. Hannah, like I said, is at speech therapy at UNI, and there's many others, great resources within our community here, that help our kids reach their fullest potential. My wife and I, and the members of Designer Genes Down Syndrome Group, who I'm representing tonight, we fully understand that this area is a great area, and we're excited to raise Hannah, her brother Josh, and all the other families are excited to be in this area as well. When people see Hannah, we want them to focus on things like potential and things like ability, and I know that other parents would agree with me. Hannah and all people with Down Syndrome have so much to offer, and that is why Designer Genes Down Syndrome Group holds events like our Buddy Walk. We want everyone to see how incredibly gifted this group of people in our community is, and that they bring so many skills, smiles, creativity, joy, and more, when they are given the opportunity to thrive. Thank you again, but we hope that everyone can please join us this Saturday for our Cedar Valley Buddy Walk. It's at the UNI Mark Messersmith Track and Field Complex across from the Dome, and begins at 11:00 a.m. So we hope you can join us and raise awareness about for inclusion and for people with Down Syndrome. Thank you.
Jake, thank you so much. God bless you. Alright, let's see who we have. Mindy Fisher. Mindy, there you go. Come on up, please.
We brought everyone presents, too.
We like presents.
So I will let everyone start passing these around.
Cool.
While you can start reading.
Yeah. Okay. Mindy is with the Waterloo School System. And we're here today in collaboration with Waterloo and Cedar Falls Schools to recognize anti-bullying. Is that correct, Mindy?
Right.
Okay. So, we have a proclamation, Cedar, and actually, I'll read the entire title. Cities of Cedar Falls, Evansdale, and Waterloo, Iowa, in collaboration with Cedar Falls and Waterloo Community School Districts proclaim, where, proclamation, whereas, school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States, where almost 30% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, written, physical, social, relational, and electronic communication, and can happen in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for administrators and community members to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school and a community, and whereas the Cedar Falls and Waterloo Community School Districts and the cities of Cedar Falls, Evansdale, and Waterloo are united in their desire to educate and encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the cities of Evansdale, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, the Waterloo Community, and the Cedar Falls School Districts proclaim their unified commitment to the education and prevention of bullying within our communities and schools, exploring solutions to the problem, including cyberbullying legislation and offering support in raising awareness and recognizing the month of October as National Anti-Bullying Month. Mindy, there's to you. Thank you, and I'll give you the opportunity to say something also. Speak right into the microphone, please.
Okay, so I just want everyone to know that I appreciate everyone's efforts around the Cedar Valley to help our community be a better place to live, and so one of the ways, the group of students that I have that usually works with me, and they would be here tonight, except that I can't even say they're studying, I just forgot to tell them. I did all this work and then forgot to like grab them. So they usually do all of this work and get up here and speak, and so we're doing a couple big events this month. The first Monday in October is National Go Blue Day, which is our anti-bullying color, and Wednesday, the 14th, is our National Go Orange Day for unity, and that all promotes acceptance and all of those good things. We're also on October 20th going to have a free and open-to-the-public-bully movie night. The movie we're featuring this year is called Cyberbully, which is something that we have been seeing more and more. As students are engaging in social media, they don't always think that what they post is permanent, or that it matters, or that it affects other people. So we are trying to spread the word as much as we can about being cyber knowledgeable for parents, including that we have a newsletter that will go out to all of our elementary parents. It'll be posted on our website. We want to have people understand that. We also have a whole bunch of hotlines and different ways to report bullings in our school, because we know that no matter what we do, it's going to happen. And so we often give out cards to kids that have our phone number and emails and all of those things on it, so kids can get a hold of us easily and report the concerns. One of the things that's really important for everyone to understand is that bullying doesn't stop if it goes unreported or ignored, and so it's really important to report it. And as a community, if you see it, feel empowered to stop it, even if it's just name-calling, because we don't tolerate any of that. If they're name-calling in public to the point where you notice it, they're having worse behaviors when nobody else is around. So keep those things in mind for us. And then the other thing I'm going to leave with you guys is, I brought the movie flyers so that your office could have it, and hopefully some members of the community will come as well. It's going to be at Central, and it's free. Did I mention free? So come, so, thank you.
Mindy, thank you very much. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good work. You bet. Speaking of good friends, Mary Potter, come on up. Bill McEntee. And Blake Bishop. So you guys come on up. Where's Blake? Oh, he's not here. Okay, but you said he was. Okay, very good. Good to see you. We need the rose between the two thorns. We're recognizing Life Insurance Awareness Month, something that we do annually also, and again, with Bill and Mary, are very good friends of the City of Waterloo. So this is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas life insurance helps safeguard families, I'm sorry, let me start that again, whereas, life insurance helps safeguard families' financial security, and nearly 80% of US households have some form of life insurance coverage, and whereas the life insurance industry is a primary source of financial and retirement security to more than 75 million American families, and whereas the life insurance industry pays billions to beneficiaries each year, and whereas life insurance benefits are a tremendous source of financial relief and security to families who lose a loved one, and whereas many Americans lack adequate life insurance coverage or have no life insurance at all, and whereas during times like these, when many families are struggling, life insurance is more important than ever in the event of a premature death, and whereas September 2015 has been designated as Life Insurance Awareness Month, with a goal of making consumers more aware of their life insurance needs. And now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 2015 as Life Insurance September 2015 as Life Insurance Awareness Month, and ask all of our citizens to learn more about life insurance and its benefits. Mary or Bill, one of you get the proclamation, and somebody gets to speak.
I'll hold it for you.
Okay. Right in front of your mouth, Bill. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clark.
You're welcome.
And council for having us here tonight. We feel that this is a... We're here representing the local chapter of the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors, and the importance of life insurance is the fact that many, many families rely on proceeds of that financial product after their loved one is gone. Loved one's gone, the memory's still there, but in many cases, some families are not taking care of it the way they should have. And we feel that it's the basis of a sound financial plan, whether it's for an individual family or in a business situation. So we would urge each and every citizen of Waterloo to seek out your current advisor, do a review of what you have, and if you haven't done anything in the last five to 10 years, you might be pleasantly surprised that you might be able to save a little bit on premiums, because as any other business, pencil's gotten a little sharper. So I would urge people to seek out that advice. We appreciate you having us.
Bill, thanks very much. Thank you for that. Mary, good to see you here. Thank you very much, guys. You know, as I'm walking back to my chair, I'm just sitting here thinking tonight of all of the really, really, really good programs that we have in Waterloo. We talk about mental illness, and Down Syndrome, and bullying, and life insurance, and earth sciences, and we have so many dedicated people in this community that care about the community, and they care about the people, and they give of themselves their time and their efforts to make sure that these very important matters are brought to our attention, and I just think it's incredibly important. Thank you very much, all of you. And all of you that were here for the proclamations, don't feel compelled to stay. You guys can certainly go if you'd like. You're not gonna offend anybody.
Not you, Keith.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A to B4. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $1,228,468.05, 1,228,468.05.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Did Captain Trelor leave?
Appears as he did.
Okay. I don't know, Dan, maybe you can answer this, but during the finance committee meeting, we talked about the lieutenants that are going to that training there in that battalion, or that Charlie training, or I'm sorry, the tri-state training. And Captain Trelor, or Chief Trelor, said those folks were not on the clock, so there would not be any overtime replacing, that kind of thing. So are they going on their own time? Or how does that work if they're not on the clock? Can you tell me that, or is that a question for Pat? I'm sorry, I should've asked him that during the finance.
Dan Tralka, Director of Safety, I don't know if they're gonna be on their own time or how it's being handled.
As long as you're up there also. New World Lounge, too, that is not one of the problem operations over there, Upper Real Street, is that correct?
They are under the umbrella right now of being a chronic nuisance property. I spoke with the manager of the property, Mr. Hayes, and we've had several discussions, and he's provided me with a abatement plan to try to address some of the issues occurring there. Most of the incidents occur in the parking lot, so we're working to get a handle on them.
Would it be prudent to do a six-month renewal rather than a one-year, or is that not an option?
That's at the discretion of the council.
It's not an option unless they apply for a six-month license. It's two totally different licenses.
So it's an all-or-nothing deal? Thank you.
Further questions? Who's beeping?
That me?
Without further questions, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes on everything but 1B. 1B, I would vote no on that item.
1B.
1B.
Good train.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mister?
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the designation of the Campbell Baking Company Building, locally known as the Wonder Bread Building, as a local historic landmark located at 325 Commercial Street.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two? We do not have any written objections on file. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the historic designation of the Wonder Bread Building? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution then approving the designation of the Campbell Baking Company Building, locally known as the Wonder Bread Building, as a local historic landmark located at 325 Commercial Street, and authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move that receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the rezoning request by New Directions Counseling Service, PLLC, to rezone .61 acres of land from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ Conditional Zoning District for the purpose of establishing counseling services professional office located at 1310 Solar Drive.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this rezoning request? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing and also approve... Close the hearing and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Council, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain properties.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I move as a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the 2015 fall stump removal project.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to the stump removal project?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the fall stump removal project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I move to close the hearing along with a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, and form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Very good. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I move to close the hearing along with a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, and form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to the stump removal project?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the fall stump removal project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I move to close the hearing along with a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, and form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to leisure services for review.
Second. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the FY 2016 Upper Gates Park Playground Project.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any objections?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Upper Gates Park Playground Project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the FY 2016 Upper Gates Park Playground Project.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any objections?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Upper Gates Park Playground Project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. Council, do you have comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to leisure services for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you would let us know what the bids were, please. We have one, two, three, four, five bidders.
The first bid was from Bowlin Recreation of Marshalltown, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. There was three options on the bid. The first option was for $58,580,000.000. The second option was for $57,500,570,000. And option three was not bid. The second bid was from Cunningham Recreation of Charlotte, North Carolina. The bid bond was for five percent. Option one is $59,984.97,59984.97. Option two was for $59,941.08,59941.08. Option three is for $59,957.73,59957.73. The third bid is from Frye and Associates of North Kansas City, Missouri. The bid bond was for five percent and the bids for all three options were each $60,000, six zero commas, zero 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 point zero zero. The next bid was from All Inclusive Rec of Monroe, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. Their bid was also for $60,000 for each of the three options, six zero commas, zero 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 point zero zero. The final bid was from ABCreative.net from Urban Dale, Iowa. Their bid bond was for five percent and their bid amount was also for $60,000 for each option, six zero commas, zero 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 point zero zero.
Very good, thank you, madam clerk. Item number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number six is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's for the demolition of the former Tri-City Clothing Store generally located at 711 Logan Avenue.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding contract to Shaffer Tree and Lawn-
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Mr. Welper, you were waiting on me.
I was waiting.
And I was waiting on you. Sorry. We did have some bids here, ladies and gentlemen, we had three bids, so clerk will read the bids.
The first bid was from Twin City Tree Services. The bid security was in the form of a check for $2,100 and the bid amount is for $41,450, four one comma four five zero point zero zero. The second bid was from Shaffer Tree and Lawn Service. The bid security was in the form of a check for $1,644. The bid amount was for $32,880, three two comma eight eight zero point zero zero. The final bid was from Trees, Tree Pros of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid security was also in the form of a check for $1,775. The bid amount was for $35,500, three five comma five zero zero point zero zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Now then, Mr. Welper.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we'll adopt a resolution awarding the contract to Shaffer Tree and Lawn Service, Inc., in the amount of $32,880 for the fall 2015 tree stump removal services.
Second.
Very good, madam clerk, that's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for the FY 2016 Upper Gates Park Playground Project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, we have any objections?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Upper Gates Park Playground Project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote also, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We only have one bid tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Clerk, who's that from and how much is it for?
That bid is from Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent and the bid amount is for $175 per ton. One seven five point zero zero.
Thank you very much. Resolutions, please, seven, eight, and nine. Can we start with those three?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the request by Midwest Development for the 22-lot final plot of Ottoman Heights Fifth Edition located near the northeast corner of West Shawless Road and Hoff Road. And number eight, a resolution approving the Iowa DOT agreement, number 2015 dash seventeen dash two nineteen, in the amount of forty, $473,200 with TSF dash 100% DOT funding dash $298,200 and USTEP dash 50% IDOT, $87,500, and the city's share, 50%, or $87,500 for traffic safety improvements at Shawless Road and Highway 21, and authorize mayor to execute said agreement. And number nine, a resolution approving the application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for ICAP funding for re-timing the downtown traffic signal system for $200,000 with a 20% local match by the City of Waterloo, and upon completion, be responsible for adequately maintaining and operating the project for public use during the project's useful life and directing execution of said application by mayor.
Second.
Very good, counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor? Number seven? Yes, sir. If we could hear from Noel, there's been some neighbor concern, existing neighbors in the Ottoman Park neighborhood about the three homes that have been built in the new subdivision, concern of them being smaller than surrounding homes in the area. If Noel could tell us, you know, about the deed of dedication and how it's really the buyer's choice as to the size of home, as long as it meets the minimum deed of dedication requirements?
Sounds like you just did a good job of explaining it, David. But Noel, would you try?
Is that correct, Noel?
Yes.
As Mr. Jones said, one of the components of the final plot is the deed of dedication, which often has a lot of private covenants, private restrictions in there. One of the ones in there is about no single-family dwelling should be constructed, and it has sizes in there, about 1,400 square feet for single-story homes, 1,800 square feet for a split-level home or one and a half-story home. It requires a two-car attached garage with a minimum of 400 square feet for any house built out there. So this deed of dedication was very similar to the deed of dedications for some of the existing homes that were built out there. The property owners just chose to build bigger on those other lots, whereas the three homes being constructed right now have been closer to the minimum, obviously, than the larger homes out there. But that's at the discretion of the home builders.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Noel, thanks, David. Further questions on seven, eight, or nine? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. If we could do the next three, please, ten, eleven, twelve, and we'll take the last two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 10 is a resolution approving the annual financial report for city streets for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, and authorizing transmittal to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Number 11 is a resolution approving award of hotel motel tax council distributionary funds to Waterloo Leisure Services for the Riverfront Stadium Video Board in the amount of $10,000 and to the Waterloo Police Department for uniformed presence at events in the amount of $41,000. And item number 12 is a resolution approving contract agreement between the US Department of Housing and Urban Development and the City of Waterloo in the amount of $8,250 for complaint processing administrative costs, supplemental payments, if any, additional training and partnership funds for the Fair Housing Assistance Program.
Second.
Very good. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question on number 11. That $41,000 for police presence, is that typical? Is that about what we've been averaging the last few years? I thought we had talked about, without knowing for sure which events those were for, I thought we had talked about trying to get some of the event sponsors to pick up some of that, or is it something different?
Dan Tcholak, the Director of Safety Services, I think this is higher than typical. A list should be included with the packets, and within the next month or so, we'll be bringing the special events ordinance forward so that the council can take a look at it and potentially approve it.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we had asked for, but I think $15,000 of that money was for some of our political guests that have come into the area, so there was an additional charge of $15,000. Normally, it's about a $25,000 ask to help work on that level, but I think that 15 was additional for political folks coming in. Thank you.
Further questions? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Last two, please, 13 and 14.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
13 is a resolution approving Main Street parking lot loan refinancing and continued loan guarantee by the City of Waterloo in an amount not to exceed $216,424.87, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents. And 14 is a resolution approving a moratorium for a period of eight months on the issuance of a special permit or license for the establishment of any new recycling junk or salvage yards.
Second.
Counsel, we have questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, could we have Eric just kind of update us on number 13? Is that a declining balance, Eric? Are we making progress on that, or are they making progress on that?
Eric Trader, city planner. I know it is declining. I don't have the amounts. I know they are chipping away at it as they can, but it has been, you know, something that they've kind of struggled with, keeping a positive cash flow with that parking lot. It does cash flow for them, but, you know, once they pay their minimum bills that they have with it, the revenues off of it barely make it cash flow, so it is something that they have struggled with, and they've got an opportunity now to refinance it and get a lower interest rate, which can help with that, so.
Because it is fully rented, isn't it, as far as we know?
I mean, for the most part. I mean, I think from time to time, there might be some stalls that become available, but for the most part, it stays fully rented.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Mayor, if we could have just an overview on number 14, the purpose of that, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. From time to time, we go through the zoning ordinance and try to update it based on new things that we're seeing happening across the state and in other cities. I know that the state has this eye care program, Iowa Auto Recyclers Program, that a lot of them are looking to join, and it looks like a very good program. So what we'd like to do is to take some time to properly draft and redraft our ordinance to take into a lot of the benefits that we see in that program that the state has, and to compare our ordinance to what other major municipalities have. Generally, we don't like new projects to happen while we're looking to refine a section of the zoning ordinance. And you may recall, we just redid a lot of the zoning ordinance. We try not to tackle the larger, more complicated areas as part of a larger one. We do them piece by piece, and right now, we're working on this one.
Further questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Number 15, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison? Arm wrestle for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Waterloo by amending Section 5 dash 2 dash 6A, parentheses A, parentheses 1, discharging weapons to include animal control employees.
Second.
Very good. Motion second. Counsel, questions or comments? I'm sorry, yeah, questions or comments regarding this item? Mr. Schmidt?
You know, the last time we talked about this, and Sandy helped me make sure that I'm stating this correctly, but this is going to be to allow our code enforcement folks to shoot wild animals. Is that correct?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic, um, this is for animal control, not code enforcement.
I'm sorry.
But, um, yes, basically, the severely injured or distempered raccoons, anything between the hours of eight and five, we take to the Humane Society and euthanize. This would be after hours.
So this is more for a humane effort rather than a public safety effort? Because that's the thing I keep struggling with, is why would we not carry this over to a dangerous dog? And I mean, not a potentially dangerous dog, I mean, a dog that's got a hold of some kid or got a hold of some little retired person that...
Dan might want to help me on this, but when something like that occurs, we call the police department for backup, mainly because we are not professionals to fire a weapon with other people around. Plus, we're not trained to shoot an animal in front of other people. Plus, during that time, there's a lot of anxiety, tempers are high. It's just, it's not a good situation, and the police department comes in and they can handle either individuals or crowds. So we back off when it comes to that.
One other thing that you didn't mention, Sandy, which I think has been an incredible misunderstanding of this, is that your, is the animal control officers won't be carrying the weapon. The weapon will be kept at the animal control headquarters in a lot cabinet. So, I mean, they're not going to have access to that immediately. And I think when the situation, you mentioned, Mr. Schmidt, usually that, I mean, that's pretty much of an emergency situation, you need somebody there right now.
We're also going to be licensed as a wildlife nuisance operator through the DNR. I talked to them today, so, I mean, we're doing all the rules the way we're supposed to.
Thank you. Last but not least, training, will there be some type of training provided?
Yes, we're gonna work with the police department on that, so we won't be out shooting anything until we're trained.
Very good. And I just want to add something, because I've gotten several emails and some calls, actually, about this, and there's an enormous amount of misunderstanding. The first is, and Sandy said it, but I'm gonna repeat it. Normal working hours, between eight in the morning and five in the afternoon, we work Normal working hours, between eight in the morning and five in the afternoon, we work with the animal rescue services, and any animal that's picked up for any reason during that period goes to either the humane society or animal rescue. It's only after hours when we have a severely injured or sick animal that we have no other access to euthanasia at those times, and it's unfair to the animal to sick, stick that kind of an animal in a cage and leave it there all night when it's obviously been severely injured or sick. So I want everybody to understand that, and again, the officers are, the animal control officers are not going to be carrying weapons, so there won't be out shooting dogs and cats. This is for particular instances, and I think it's going to be incredibly rare that this will actually be used. Yes, sir?
I guess my question then is that you just stated that the weapon would be kept at the facility. Excuse me. David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. You guys don't know me already? Okay, anyway, you stated that the weapon would be kept at the facility, so by the time the animal control person gets back to the facility, gets the weapon and comes back to the site, haven't the police already been able to respond?
It's probably not going to happen that way, Mr. Drier. Normally, when there's a sick or injured animals, the animal control officers will pick the animal up, put it in the vehicle, take it to the control facilities, and that's where the animal will be disposed of.
Okay, so a bullet is cheaper, I realize, than euthanasia, but isn't that usually the responsibility of a veterinarian or somebody like that, rather than a bullet?
So you'd rather us hold the animal all night long and suffer until the next morning?
No, I'm not saying that.
That's the case.
I'm saying that either you get the police or you have a vet on call.
Okay.
My vet's on call all the time.
The council will, and they're very expensive, the council will have the opportunity to make that decision. Are there further questions or comments from anybody? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item 16, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welber?
Item 16 is a motion approving a change order number one for a net increase of $283,485.35 for the sanitary sewer improvements fiscal year 2015, Phase II, CIP Pipeline Project Contract Number 876.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please. I'm sorry, it's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business for tonight. It is time for oral presentations. If anybody in the audience would like to speak to the mayor, counsel, now is the time to do so. Yes, Mr. Trolke, give you an opportunity first. Thank you.
Dan Trolke, Director of Safety Services, I did get a message from Chief Treeler that the firefighters are going to be attending this training on their own time.
On their own time. Thank you very much, and thanks to the firefighters. Okay, yes, sir. Just please give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, if you would.
Ron Wood, Chair of the Human Rights Commission. I just want to introduce our newest commission member tonight, Eric May, right here.
Good.
And welcome him on board.
Very good, thanks, Ron. Eric, I've seen you around a lot, see you all the time. Welcome on board, and thanks for volunteering. You'll do a great job, and hope you have a good time doing it. Thanks. Welcome. All right, is there anyone else?
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale. I don't object to the sewer lining project, but does anybody have a cost, what it costs per line of foot to line a sewer? I know it's necessary to be done.
I'm sure we do, Wayne, and I tell you what, if, I don't know if you have it on top of your head, if you don't, if you check with Larry either after the meeting or give him a call in the office during the day, I'm sure they can give you that.
Because I realize it has to be done in order to keep a DNR and all those agencies satisfied.
Thanks, Wayne. Yeah, it has to be done just because it's, we need to do it, so, yes, sir. Go ahead, Dan, if you'd help Bruce out there, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bruce.
Bruce DeBriek, 142nd Street, Mariner. I'm just reminding everybody again, business owners and homeowners alike, or company managers, to make sure that the winter season's coming up soon, that means more snow, ice, and clogged sidewalks. Please take the time to think, consider how you're going to have these potential, be proactive versus reactive, please, and thank you for your time and good care.
Thank you, Bruce, and I'll repeat that, just in case it wasn't that clear, although I think you're rushing winter just a little bit, Bruce. But Bruce's reminder is a very good one, that we will be getting snow and ice eventually, and we do have a city ordinance that requires timely removal of snow and ice from sidewalks and from curbs, and Bruce is a first例 example. Folks are in wheelchairs, and they do need those cleaned, and the city's in the same shape. We need to do a good job also, Bruce, so thank you for reminding us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. Two items tonight, I think, unrelated. The first is, it's great that we're cleaning up Tri-City. We'll just deal with the costs in the back end, but we did, a couple of us did ask to try and use TIF funds, and we didn't really talk about the source of the funding tonight, so is that still on the table, or has that decision been made?
It hasn't been made yet, Mr. Murphy, but between our department heads and so forth, we'll determine whether or not, how that's funded, particularly since there will most likely be some legal issues tied up in it, we're going to have to use the appropriate funds with that in mind. I'm not sure what they'll be.
Okay. The second issue is, I noticed in the, in the meeting minutes that we are sending some staff out to pick up some artwork. Is that part of the, an addition to the Haitian art collection? Sorry.
Kent, I don't believe that one is, but...
Okay.
I'll let Kent answer.
Kent Shankle, Cultural and Arts Director. That is to pick up a number of different things, and they will relate to a number of different collections. One piece, one of the stops will be to pick up Midwest art, another one will be to pick up international folk art, a wide range of art.
Right.
And one stop will include some Haitian art as well.
So I've always kind of wondered, we don't really own the Haitian art collection, it belongs to the National Foundation. I always kind of wonder why they don't bear the cost to move their art around.
Actually, the collection is owned by our community. It's held by the Community Foundation of Waterloo and Northeast Iowa for the benefit of the Center for the Arts and for our community.
Right, but they own it. If it came down to it, they own the artwork.
They do own the artwork, however, they can't sell it without reinvesting any proceeds from those sales back into the collection, so they are, so those are resources that stay in our community.
Right, so as we move artwork around, just in the future, I think a number of us are going to be watching this, it's their artwork. Now, they're gracious enough to let us display it, but it's truly their artwork, so they should pay some of the cost to move their artwork around, in, out, loan, pick it up. It seems only fair. It's their, it's theirs, not ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. Pertaining to item 16, I stood up and I didn't get recognized, so I will reiterate. Here we go again with another net increase. Was there not a bid not to exceed? So that's a question that I would like to have somebody look into. Also, in the paper, item number two, in the paper, I saw where we're going to start taking over bus benches by the city. I noticed today, before I came to the meeting, I went down to the, to the branch and grass recycle area, the grinder is still not back there. So it's been about three weeks, at least, that it's still not back down there, and the emphasis was on, we lack the manpower. I've been here to council meetings during the wintertime, when there's two feet of snow between the curb and where I need to park to find a parking spot, so if we don't have the manpower to remove the snow, then where are we going to find the manpower to remove the snow around the park bench, or the bus benches? I'm from Parkersburg, the bench company is from Parkersburg, so if you think that's a problem, it's not, because I don't like the guy that owns it. But anyway, it's still one of those things, that now we're going to put another thing back on the taxpayer, and Cedar Falls, according to the article in the paper, made them remove the benches, so they had to buy new benches, we're going to buy new benches. Now, we're going to not have enough manpower to maintain and keep them clean. Something seems to me like, if we don't have manpower to do other things in this city, where are we going to find the manpower for that? Item number three, I saw in the paper where there's a hole underneath the cement in the jail parking lot, and they were talking about $200,000 to $400,000 to tear it all out, remove all the material, et cetera, or $4,000 to pump it. Pump it. Let's not spend X number of dollars to find out what the problem is. Put some sensors in there that tell us that there's another void coming, pump it. Keep pumping it till we've got it smashed down far enough that it's not a problem anymore. Along Ridgeway, item number four, along Ridgeway, where it intersects with Kimball, there's been a whole bunch of utility work done on the sides, and it's still two lanes, it's been months. So why can't they go ahead and get that fixed so that Ridgeway can get back to a four-lane street? Item number five, there's a street by Kim, or Knights of Columbus, that has been torn up for a couple of months, and I don't see any activity there when I go down and take my recycled stuff. The road is still dug down, and there's no activity been done there to get that road back in shape. Who's watching over all this stuff? Is there somebody with the city?
Thank you, Mr. Drier. We'll look into all of those things, and as I've said many times, if you would come down, I know I'll get criticized for this, but if you come down during the day, when we have time to sit down and answer those questions, we'll answer every single one of them for you and let you know what the answers are. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I just had a quick question. One of the audience members mentioning the TIF. Are we going to have that TIF work session next Monday?
Yes.
Where are you planning on, we are, okay.
Well, Michelle, there was a request by Ms. Weidner to have all the questions in by today, and if they are, then yes, the intent is to have that TIF workshop next week.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, just to make sure people knew.
I'll post the time. We're not sure what time yet, but we'll post the time next.
Thank you.
And I want to mention, one of the things you requested was current accounting of revenues and expenditures, and as I responded, we will not have that yet for the fiscal year ended 15. We generally, planning staff and my staff generally have that reviewed and ready to go shortly around Thanksgiving time, and it will take us till then to have that. So we can answer the other parts of the questions that we have now, but some of it, we won't be able to do yet.
Okay, very good. Forrest?
Forrest, Illinois, 1725 Honeycomb Road. Will this be advertised? I had a call from a person in Dyke who owns property in Waterloo who wants to know and wants to be there for that work session. Will it be advertised?
Not any more than we normally advertise everything. Every meeting that we have, Forrest, gets posted in the paper, it's on the website, and it hangs up down at City Hall, so no, we're not going to run an advertisement on it, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Mr. Zellfer, are we adjourning to executive session under proper authority?
Yes, we are pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51C. We are. It's litigation.
Very good, thank you.
That's a roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote adjourned, so, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you.